All right, so we're gonna call this meeting to order about 5:35 PM. Welcome, everybody. First order of business, I guess, is to congratulate and welcome our new board member.
Yes.
Carrie Echols. Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Happy to be here.
This is your chance now to make a big speech to the public.
I decline.
Not mandatory.
Not at all.
At the next meeting. Okay, so the minutes for our last meeting, which was on April 4th. I guess three of us can vote on?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, good, so move. And move right along with the financial statements. Judy?
Yep, you have a total of...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
301. We made your standing since you weren't there for the minutes.
There he is.
Okay, all right.
And 10 enters.
So you have actually 12 warrants in front of you, if I take that last one off, for a total of $214,952.86 to sign tonight, as well as those extra payroll warrants and the change of signature.
Can you repeat that number of that? What was the change?
It's $214,952.86.
Okay.
Before I get into the sort of financial update about things, there is one item and I need to bring to your attention, and that is we have a student who will be leaving Deerfield Elementary, who currently has an FM system. The parents have requested to potentially purchase the system. However, you, as a school committee, need to declare it as surplus property before that can happen.
What is the acronym used?
FM system is Amplification for Hearing Aid Student.
Yeah, we've done that in the past for the old system.
Okay, now, we don't want to say too much, because it's a small town. It can be easily figured out.
So they would like to continue using this apparatus that helps the child?
Right, but technically, because it was purchased with taxpayer funds, you have to declare it as surplus property. It has to be offered to the rest of the town departments. If they decline, which I'm guessing they would, then what we would use is a straight depreciation.
Right.
You know, they have a shelf life of about five years. This was purchased two years ago, so there is no need for it in the school.
Yeah, there's no other student that needs it right now.
Right now, and so by the time somebody else comes through, technology will change, and you'd get another one.
Right.
Okay.
So somebody would need to make a motion to declare an FM system valued that was purchased for $1,852 as surplus property.
Well, I was just gonna say, and so you're saying, just to be fair, I mean, so it likely will become obsolete, and there's nobody's using it now, but if somebody came to school next year or...
We would purchase it again. So basically, an FM system, you get a hearing aid system, then it connects to either microphone, the teachers, there's different systems that are used sometimes. There's a tower in the room, the micro system, and that kind of, there's all these different components that get configured to a certain thing. So if someone new was to come in, we buy new parts for the earpieces, and then configure the rest of the system to it. Given the, I mean, my recommendation is fine to just let this go forward. We'll buy a new system for the next person coming through.
Yeah.
I don't think we've normally taken this step. We've probably been, if they've gone on the frontier, we traveled along. We just kind of said frontier would pick up the maintenance costs of the system and any, any maintenance cost to it. So, and so those, we have not, we haven't kind of taken any action on them. We kind of, it's one of those, I guess, maybe there probably could have been reimbursement to the elementary to continue that moving forward. We haven't. In this particular case, the student is not going to frontier, at least that's believed.
Right.
And so therefore, the parents want to be able to take that itself set up perfectly for them.
Really easy to get to that person.
So, whatever I think, so...
Okay, so I just wanted to ask a question.
And I would agree, in two years, the technologies could change. I'm gonna get over new models that's separate a couple of years, so...
For a personalized, it seems like, so...
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I interrupted you then.
No, no, it sounds good. So I'll make a motion to, to declare this piece of equipment...
Surplus property.
Surplus property.
Okay, and then I'll reach out to the town side to see if anybody wants it, which then if they don't, I'll use, I checked with the director of special education, and they have a shelf life of about five years before the technology really changes, so we'll do a straight line depreciation.
Okay, that's great. Any further discussion?
I'll second it.
I heard the second, yeah, I heard that. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so on to the financials. You have in front of you the April expenditure results, and then at the very end of the packet is sort of, again, another blush at the potential where we are right now. We have done some covering of salaries on paper at least for till the end of the year, and have realized some significant savings in salaries in a few places. There are some maintenance projects that Bob would like to be able to do, so this frees up some cash to be able to do that. In one instance, because of the energy grant and the replacement of the boilers, which is at no cost, the electrical work needs to be paid for, because that was not part of the bid spec. So, again, there's more than enough money to do that, plus some other things in there. So, I mean, things are looking, you know, real good. We're continuing to monitor areas that, you know, we might be a little bit shaky on, so that we know where we stand, and then we'll kind of figure out whether or not there might be some end-of-year purchases that principal wants and needs to do. So we'll sort all that out, but I'll keep you appraised as we continue to go through this process. So, that's currently where my projections are for what we stand.
So maybe at the next meeting, we'll have more of an idea, well, obviously, more of an idea, but there'll be more specific proposals, thought, to spend them for project in the building?
Yeah, and the electrical work, I think, has already been scoped out to do so, to get the boilers up.
Sure, but that's not, there could be other things, like mine.
Right, so, they, Mary, the TMSR, Judy, has sent out the principal's end-of-year purchasing desires, if there is some leftover money, for that kind of thing, and that would also involve a little bit of... How much money you have, you know, each bill looks different as well, you know, so we'll see what that is, and so we'll have information.
But the electrical work will be part of the list we get, right?
Yeah, and actually, I guess, the electrical work is underway.
I understand that electrical work is underway, but should we authorize the electrical work to proceed?
Yeah.
Sort of outside the scope of the regional budget, I think you want to have that step taken, or?
I mean, it's part of general building repairs, you know, so I mean...
So it falls under general building repairs, any budget?
Do we have an idea what the total is on that?
$9,500. So, I mean, we've got the money, and you can just, you know, we'll do a transfer from salaries to cover, so...
Just slightly getting at, but similar topic, Bob, what's been retired?
That's correct.
Effective when? In terms of somebody managing building projects over the summer?
So, I'm looking for the, we're now posted, gonna start the interview process in first, June 1st is kind of the timeline I've set. To begin date, probably the second or third week of July, depending on the amount of, like then Bob is finished the first week of August.
Oh, he is here too. Okay, good. Good. That's what I was hoping to hear.
So he's gonna take care of most of the summer projects and get those rolling, and that's why he, he could have left earlier, and he chose to make sure we got the summer projects going, so that was helpful.
Great, great. Okay. Sorry, Judy, we're interrupting your flow.
That's quite all right, actually, that's pretty much it.
That's it? Okay.
Again, you're in a very healthy place, so I mean, that's not a real concern unless some huge thing happened, but I can't see anything on that last one.
Just a question on the...
Knock on wood, and say something.
Okay, I'm ready.
Yeah, I'm trying, knock on your chair.
So like the, under Finance Administration Services, I noticed quite a bit of those are still at 100%. I didn't know if that was, if there was a reason, like we pay those later in the month, you know, copiers and all that kind of thing are still at...
Actually, one of the warrants that you were about to sign is for central office expenses being billed back to the town.
Gotcha.
So those will start to kick in, and I have not, you know, and I've accounted for those in my...
Okay, yeah, in your back, your back sheet, yeah, okay, good.
Anybody else? Questions to Judy? If not, Judy, I want to thank you again for shepherding us to this point.
Yes.
And...
We're almost there. Almost across the finish line, so...
Yeah. So we'll move on to public comment, hearing none. We're gonna move on to new business items, so, if you're attentive?
Sure, the first one is the comprehensive, comprehension, that's, you don't have to make a joke on that.
Nope.
The comprehensive school health grant. So I handed out in front of you, and, and we're gonna share this to make five copies on the government. And Meg Birch, our current nurse leader, who's a stipend position, was going to come tonight. She was over at the GCC thing, so I don't know, she was gonna come over here to talk with us as well, but, so basically, we applied for a grant for $70,000, and it was awarded at $55,000. And this is, and it was awarded about two and a half weeks ago, I would guess I would say, and so we've been kind of going back and forth with the state guys to find out why we got less than what we asked for. And basically, it comes down to, is the state read our application, looking at Frontier's student need, students with, you know, need financial need and SES of Frontier, and not the entire district. And we look at the actual entire district, it's actually lower than Frontier's numbers. When we kind of appealed on that, they said it was, even though we kind of, both numbers are in there, we didn't clearly specify how our district was set up and such, and that they were not going to, they went all the way to the top, they said, that they're not going to offer more money. So there is, that's one of the reasons why there's kind of a delay in getting students kind of being thrown at you here tonight. But, so basically, what we're looking for, this grant would allow us to have a part-time nurse leader to take care of a lot of loose ends that are happening with student health services across the district. Health services, the scope of them have gone up across the district, of what nurses are doing and what's falling underneath the nursing purview, and I really look at this as a good, a good way to get us caught back up by putting a part-time person. The plan is to have the, is to have Meg Birch, who's the current nurse leader, become part-time school nurse, part-time this job, and replace her with a part-time nurse. We're kind of moving there. It's gonna be a difficult position to fill, but we're hopeful. And then she would oversee the, kind of the breakdown of, of what you have in front of you here, if you really look at the scope of services, which is like page three, kind of the breaking down, and I won't read through each portion, but really looking at some of the things that we don't have in place. I guess I'll say some of the highlights, just so people understand what we're talking about here. Making sure that we're following proper protocols in all the buildings for case management, record-keeping, making sure that all, you know, files and correspondence going in and out of the school are up to date, creating a verge program for students who need for hospitalization for, for any issue. When they leave, the services may receive them when they're out, and when they come back, currently, we don't have anything in place for that. Provide health education for pre-K to 12, using trauma-resilient, informed approaches. A lot of the, how to respond to local emergencies, and the nurse's roles and that, and then health assessments of all different groups, and there's a long list of, as you can see, going through there, of the different things that are falling underneath that. And so basically, kind of beefing up, and kind of in a general, beefing up what the nurse leader does, that we do right now for a stipend position. Now, there is a hook on this, and this is where I kind of, this is difficult to do this in, and I didn't think we'd call it joint meeting to do this, but it's difficult to do this in five separate meetings, so, I don't know how we renew this, but it's here in front of us, in the sense that the first three years are paid for by the grant, but the fourth year, it's expected with the district, and that's the last page. I kind of pulled that page out just to show you, that is the, the reason why we bring grants in front of the school committee, is to, by year four, you need to pick up the part-time position.
So it's different than what was sent out in our materials then? It talked about a four-year grant with three two-year renewals?
And then you can renew it at that point. You can do three two-year renewals at that point, it's over a 10-year span, so...
Okay, so that the, okay, so renewal isn't the, okay.
So, and that's really, that's kind of the stickler, and that's where we have grants coming from for the school committee, because what is the obligation of the district when you sign up for these grants? This grant is clearly designed to give us a lot of money, so you're looking at about $220,000 over the four years of it, and then you're looking at about $40,000 that we're gonna have to come up with in that fourth year.
Is there benefits related to that position, do you think? Because it's a part-time position, but I don't know if there's...
No.
Okay, so that's where it really...
And so, right now, the way the hours of a part-time, of a .5 works, the hours only go up to 20, we do it hourly, so it's still non-benefit the sub-person one, so the nurse leader would continue to receive benefits that they're receiving now.
There are...
That would be shifted to part Conway, part Frontier, under central office, and divided amongst the five towns, including region. So, you know, when you look at, does that make sense?
Yeah, we have a nurse leader now.
We, we have a stipend nurse leader now, so meaning that she receives a stipend of $12,000 over the course of the year to work outside of the, work during and outside of the school day hours, to do all of this kind of thing. And it really, and so...
So you wouldn't pay that 12?
We wouldn't pay that 12 in the first three years.
Right, and then...
So you're really looking at, and thank you for making, so we're really looking at in that final year, it's, you're making, you're really talking about a $28,000, you know, plus different increases and stuff between now and then, but you're looking about $28,000 to $30,000 in that fourth year, to give us $220,000 to do a lot of oversight and kind of beef up. And then at that point, we would look at whether or not we continue with the grant. Now, they're telling me they would continue to award it, but to what level?
Right.
You know, and if they're gonna award us $20,000 moving forward, we might say, and depending on how far we can shift our services, and, because do we need, because this is where I struggle with this, and I'm being really honest, do I need a part-time administrator for nurses consistently for the next 10 years? I certainly think we need something now to shift a lot of areas we've kind of got behind being, again, as a district, several different buildings, you know, they put out fires all day long, they get behind on putting together good procedures and that kind of thing. So I think I need, I see the need for a shift. Does it need to be, the state clearly is doing this grant because they want to see us be put in this position, be there forever, but, and, and we may not want to do that.
The one thing I saw that really intrigued me was the, you know, pre-K to four early intervention program to address behavioral issues and, that disrupt learning, and I know, and district-wide, you know, there's a lot of good things in here, but that really is where we're struggling in the early years.
Yep.
And, you know, it's, it's taking a toll on the school, and everybody that works there, any way we can do early intervention is just, I'm thrilled with. So, it seems beneficial if we could focus in those areas to try and cut that down.
Yeah, I mean, we even went back and forth, I think there's a lot of good things in here. We even went back and forth and saying, could make it a .4 position, two days a week, rather than the .5, and it really makes it a lot clearer on benefits and that kind of thing, but the, the state has, you can see here on the page two, about number two, it dictates that, under staffing requirements, they, they kind of, they tie you in, number two, second to last page. They kind of tie you in of, you know, districts with fewer than 2,000 students, and we're at 1,500 overall, 15.5 to be more exact, and requires a, what?
It's good, it sounded, it's two-faced. Double sign, huh?
Oh, no. We're looking at...
Oh, maybe I didn't get one. Oh, okay.
I'm, he's still...
All right, I was gonna say...
I was looking at this one.
I got, I got to what I had to do.
So, could you just explain to me, I'm getting hung up on the numbers, I was trying to make numbers work, just double-checking. Seven-hour workday for 96 hours over a 10-month period, is that 96 hours per month? Seven hours per, I mean, it's just bizarre the way that sentence is written. I can't make any of the numbers work. 38.5, at that hourly rate, is about 672 hours, which is about 67 hours a month, which is about nine hours a week.
It's probably 96 days a day. It's a seven-hour workday.
96 days.
96 days over 10 months, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Of course, you picked that up.
Just the other number. Just the other number you keep mentioning, it's 200 and something, wouldn't it be just three times 55?
Four.
Because we're paying, the work for the fourth year.
We're paying for the fourth year for the position, but we're still getting the money. So we're paying the 38,000 that fourth year, and that number will grow with...
Just as, you mean, we're getting, we're getting 55,000 for three years?
No, we're getting it for four years.
Okay.
But that 38, that top-line item, we have to, we have to pick up the cost of that.
The full cost of that, but the other, that, that...
Right, so where does that 38.5 go?
It's supposed to shift to direct services.
You've got to show that it's on your local budget.
Yeah.
No, I understand that, so we're not getting 55,000 in the fourth year?
We are.
Yeah, but you have to shift...
You can't use it for salary, you have to use it totally for the other...
For direct services, other things.
And you could, and you could say, you could shift things around, and we could, you know, you can do all that, yes, but...
Okay, so there's...
What are you going to shift around in a, they want to see you put it on the rolls.
Okay.
And we even got around to talk about, like, you can withdraw from the grant earlier, you know, however, this is a state association, and you have a relationship with them, and they don't go away, so if you kind of, if you're burning them on this, you're gonna get burned on all of their contract. I've kind of had a lot of what-if, we do some what-if.
Right.
I was kind of thinking about what you did. So, the idea is that there, and that 38,000, that number of that salary, is based on the current person, half-time, part-time, that current person who would fill that position, who that we have lined up for, that's how it came up with that salary number, okay?
Right, I see.
Okay, and so we're just cutting that to .5, and then .5, the other half for .5, she would serve as a school nurse.
Right.
So, and then you're talking about around $12,000 we have for a stipend, currently paying, maybe we won't use that, so you technically, if you save, you know, if you save that, or you actually are paying for it.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But, but does follow on, you are increasing staffing, and that's the hook they're using here.
But unless I miss my guess, we're gonna spend that $12,000 somewhere else that we're saving.
Yeah.
Correct.
We're gonna get something more.
I mean, I could, I mean, you could, so what could you do with someone? You could.
Well, in school districts, I have been down this road, and I've worked in a couple now that have done that, you know, you have to shift the money to somehow provide direct services to kids. So it can be used for, you know, equipment in, in health clinics, you know, for screening, yeah, all of those kinds of things, it can be shifted.
That software.
Yeah, it can be shifted to those things that are supposedly, you have to make the leap between direct services to kids.
And that was a disappointing, that was a disappointing side, when we had the full 70,000, what we, there was more stuff. So when we cut things, we cut professional development line, was probably the largest one we cut, and then we cut back a lot of the other lines, which was stuff like computers and new software and that kind of thing, and so...
But the bottom line is, we're leveraging money from the state, bringing it from Boston back to our district, which is something we always want to do in Westernland.
To improve our health services.
Yeah.
To improve our health services, right. And if we could catch that early intervention stuff...
It could save us a lot of money on that, and that's a good point there. And the bottom line is, I mean, I guess, what I was asking you is that currently, we have a stipend, I mean, is it going too far to say, you save that money, but do you ever really save money on district, but, in a sense, you know what I mean, do you, you know, you make a vacation fund like you do at home, you know what I mean, you save up so that you can go to the islands?
Use it, yeah, use it to pay for that, this is...
I mean, you could.
Well, you know that if there are certain needs that come up in our collective nursing offices in all four or five schools, that we can do things with it, because we have 12,000 a year. Do you read it, please?
I mean, there's screenings that have to be done, you know, now that a DPH is requiring this expert screening, you know, in terms of screening kids for adverse behaviors and all that kind of stuff, that all flows through the nurse's office. The Department of Public Health has really upped the amount of regulations that nurses have to answer to, so they don't just answer to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they also answer DPH.
So is anybody opposed to this? Just to cut to the chase?
Yeah, one last question would be, is the $55,000, is district-wide, so this, we would only have a share of the 55,000, and ultimately, only a share of the 38,000.
Right, so we talked about that earlier.
Missed something, pardon me.
Right, your share, is Deerfield's share of the regional, so it's...
But I mean, if the grant is gonna pay for that, I mean, Deerfield's share, this year, the next fiscal year will be 28.32, if I remember correctly.
So we're talking $9,000, $10,000?
It seems like a good thing, and then to, like, put it on our reminder calendar for, you know, check in every year, see how it's working, and then...
So she, not only that, but they require you to report back, just make sure that you're making progress, and so there's, there's a double accountability, not only us on this position, but the state is going to make you develop a grant progress report on what you're doing in order to get the following year's money.
Right.
And so we'll be able to see, we can really track it, and then we have to put it on our radar in year three.
Right.
Going into year four, kind of studying if we're not, we're gonna do it in year five.
Right.
You know what I mean, and so...
Okay.
I, I make a motion to approve participation in the comprehensive school health services grant, as recommended by administration.
Good. One second, one second, okay?
The nurses are in favor on board.
I haven't polled all the nurses, I mean, I've been working with Meg on this from the beginning. I mean, it really just gives her a warability to help the nurses, so I can't see why they wouldn't be on board.
Yeah.
Because some of the ideas around this is to also free up some of the nurses, some of that money is to get subs for the nurses on certain days to work together to develop some of these things. So some of that is, is staffing, and/or the having the nurse leader covering the office so they can work on getting things up, so some of, you know, a lot of this, some, or even a lot of it, is, is doing that kind of coverage, so getting time for people.
Right.
Because there's plenty to do, it's the cream of time.
Yeah. Great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You have announced?
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah?
Always fun to bring some sort of money forward.
Right. Is the next item something we're gonna...
Yeah, if we could push the, if we could push B to the end.
Okay.
Because that way, because, yeah, and even after the reports, that way, media can, they don't have to stare at it, because there's no vote.
Yeah.
So, discussion of performance evaluation process for the superintendent and principals. The end principals came off another school parent's request, wondering how that works. But how that works is I, at all principals, I've been with all of them, we go through their evaluations that's set by the state. For the superintendent, so, this has been a strange year for me, in the sense that I started off as interim, I didn't really do a full set of goals, kind of running in, the goal, I think, to be honest, was just kind of survive and get things in good shape moving forward.
Yes.
But I do feel that we have to start, because I'm mandated by the state to do an evaluation process. My vision is, that I've seen at the principal's seat, watching this occur at school committee, and you guys can, looking, I'm your employee, so you can certainly weigh in on this, is I'm your employee, so you can certainly weigh in on this, is that when it's cumbersome, it's not helpful to school committee, and when you're receiving huge packets and books of information, participation rate, and it has been kind of lower than what we want to see in evaluation. So, I was having a conversation with Judy, and really talking about, what if we can put the evaluation online? Through reform, where you can go through, click it, click right in the comments, in the areas where you write in the comments, it's going to tally it out automatically, because remember, there's twenty-five of you.
Right.
And so, what I want to do is roll out for June, and I have a...
I can throw away all my spreadsheets?
That's good. Well, I mean, you can still have your spreadsheet, I don't want to take away your spreadsheet.
I don't want to compile any more.
But this is a, this is a draft that we just started to play with, of what it would look like in a... You want to see it, too?
Sure.
Trying to conversation. You made it. So, basically, kind of giving, it's almost like a, and I would also say, being kind of the first year, and my contract actually starts next year. This is me finishing on my interim year, if you really want to get into the nuts and bolts of things. But this will kind of give everybody kind of a practice run-through, because I don't have goals, which are the first kind of, the first page of things here. But we can kind of go through and start to familiarize ourselves by doing kind of a practice run-through. And there may be areas where we, you know, I think we might want to enter, what do we do if we don't know? Because sometimes it's like, I have no idea if he is lawful and ethical.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, you know, so, and that's the problem with this, this evaluation. I think you, and I've heard it through the years, that to know all this stuff, you'd have to sit by me twenty-four-seven. And, you know, some things you may be very clear on, some things you may not have seen. How do I, how do we use this system, because these are the standards that we have to do in order to properly evaluate and get feedback? The other thing that came out of the weekly meeting was, it's not just about this, it's about, oh, it's just some general feedback.
Right.
And how can we do that, like, doing great here, but we'd like to see, you know, blank, you know? Or I'd like to, wouldn't say weekly, I'd like to see blank, or just give you constructive feedback in that way, and how can we do that? Mind being mindful that anything that's evaluating me is an open session. So, it does give you time to reflect about how I'm doing, but you can't just say, you know...
Yeah.
I wish you were a tie to a meeting, that would be open record. I was at Conway last night, and they made fun of me for wearing a tie.
That's why you try to have morning meetings at Conway.
Right, so, yeah, so, anyway. But, looking for thoughts on this, I'm going to try to put this together to get it out in June. Again, a run-through, give a couple of weeks, if you look to stay, you could stay a little.
So, how do we, I mean, it is what it is, and outlined by the state.
Yeah.
That's what this is here.
So, how do we increase participation, because that bothers me every year.
Yes.
Some people just don't do it, they say, oh, I don't know.
No, I don't know, not...
And that's what's our job, if you can't, you know, it is weird, because there are some things that really don't have any idea, but... I mean, that's what we're charged with, this is our job, to evaluate the superintendent.
Yeah.
I think the idea to put it online might be helpful.
Yeah.
Although, I don't know, a lot of people seem reluctant to put their names on their evaluations when they submit them to me.
They have to.
I know.
And so, I mean, in the superintendent's, like, the rules of it, I've copied it, I mean, it's a, it's on, I mean, this is it. I mean, it is a lengthy document that really, in there, it basically says, if you follow this, it's going to take ten hours a week.
Just to compile the data.
Just to kind of get the data, I mean, because if I'm really, I'm supposed to show you how I meet each standard.
Right.
And a lot of this is recommended, I mean, you do have to report to the state in evaluation. I don't know what happens if you don't report, because there has been years, I don't know what happened last year. You know, a superintendent left, but was there one, I'm not sure, evaluation was done, and I'm not sure the state ever came asking, where's the evaluation? But at the same time, as Mary just said there, and this is the, one of the big, the big three roles of the school committee is budget, policy, hire-and-fire me. So, or just give me kudos.
Right.
So...
How was it done in the past, was there, did we fill it paper form?
Paper form.
Or verbally?
Paper form.
Yeah.
Paper form.
That's kind of the thing there, was handed out, wasn't it?
Right. And if you've ever seen, those of you who've used Google Forms, it automatically takes the question, gives you a tally to each question, so we can have, you'll be able to see graphically where the ones, and then, any comment sections get moved to the bottom, and you can have comments on each area, and as it says here, if you do anything, if you do anything but proficient, you have to give a comment. You can't just say terrible, 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 not give me feedback as to why I'm terrible.
Yeah.
So, I should say great, great, great. It's fine, that didn't so happen. So, that's the idea here, so, I guess I'm asking for some, again, I don't know how this works with five different... Well, technically, I guess each committee could be...
But you're saying, what do you, I mean, you're saying there's a plan now that you're trying to get this online, right?
The plan is to get this online, and then give it kind of a trial run in June.
Right.
Okay, I mean, hopefully, I mean, for the most part, if I'm not doing proficient work at this point on most things, you guys are in deep trouble because you just hired me.
Right.
But the, but what will happen is for next October, I will have to have some goals for the year that'll be approved. And then by next April, because they're joint meetings now, so the next April joint meeting, I mean, it's kind of a quick turnaround, but maybe that's where we finalize the evaluation to go out in May.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing, I think, I think having the evaluation done in April, straight out of budget season, it's going to be too much on school committee members, and it's going to be too much on...
And the contract calls for something before your contract, in terms of evaluation.
And this gives you full, the language of the law also breaks down, like, this is all subject to negotiation in the contract. So, there are certain things that you can negotiate in and out, and how it's done, and that kind of thing. We didn't do any of that within my contract, and again, I think we can have an open discussion of how, what's the best avenue to do this.
Yeah.
Well, no.
I don't think you can hide, I don't think you can hide from how bad evaluation can be.
I think in the five, five or six years that this has been in existence...
This has been in existence since the last year of Regina's...
When Regina was here, and we went through...
This is one of the things that she was like, oh, I've had enough of this.
We went through two training sessions with the committees, the joint committees, to try and figure out how to fill this thing out. And then she prepared the first book of goals and accomplishments and everything else, which is, people have been giving us one-and-a-half-inch binders full of materials on how they accomplished all the bits and pieces within here. It's a terribly cumbersome process.
It is, it's a lot of work.
I mean, it's...
You don't know if it...
It's pretty thought-provoking, I would imagine, for a superintendent to walk, how many did you, have you...
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's fun times. Anyway, it is, it is a cross, because I have worked in higher ed, it is really a cross between evaluation and the promotion and tenure process and higher ed. That's really what this is, because when I went through promotion and tenure, I had bins of stuff I had to drop off, you know, at the dean's office when my time came. So, that's really what this is, is that, you know, you're supposed to probably provide evidence of things that you've done, you know, whatever else. So, it's really, that's where it is, it's an intersection of that.
Right, and the hard part for me in separating it was, is the goals were enumerated by Marty and Regina, they tied into the three standards.
Yeah.
And so, when they came out, when it came time to evaluate, you were trying to plug them in to the standards and evaluate them in association with the standards, as opposed to this format, where you do the, you look at the goals and say, did they accomplish or not, and then you can go through each of the others and provide instances.
Yeah, and listen, I've been through this, unfortunately, as a school committee member, with a superintendent in a tough spot in Hammers, and it was, at that particular time, there were people not using evidence based on some of their evaluation things. And so, you can put all this in, and still someone can fill it out any way they want.
Right.
And so, and so, and when I looked at this, the one thing I was also thinking about, gosh, I'd love to put in reminders, because, like, you know, safety in operations, you know, that kind of thing, well, you know, putting forth the key fob system. Well, I'm not thinking about that when you're filling it out.
Exactly.
You'd be like, oh, he really could, we could do more around here, not realizing that we're moving forward on that, or, you know, capital improvements that were affecting these things, or putting forth. So, like, I don't know if you do a reminder list, but then at the same time, you don't know, it's like, then it becomes like a lot of work for me to put all this together.
Right.
To remind you...
Yeah.
What you're doing.
I don't know, that's why, I'm struggling with it, and, you know, the, you're right, the whole class talks, you know, you're supposed to get, you know, not supposed to, one of the things you can do is get a training, kind of go through that whole thing, spend hours and hours and hours, and, and I'll just be honest, I chase five meetings a month. You know what I mean, so, you know, I'm trying to streamline this process.
Exactly.
So...
And legally, you can collect the data electronically, you just can't deliberate about it outside of an open meeting.
Right.
That's the way one...
Can't discuss it outside of...
Right, that's the way one decides, and that's how it came to be done in open session, was because the school committee deliberated outside of an open meeting.
The one concern I have with it being online is who's controlling...
Well, I'm going to change my...
It looks good.
Well, I know that. Well, so, the other thought, the thought there was whether or not you create a subcommittee from the joint committee to work on evaluation of the superintendent to make this. I saw Gary looking at it, I'm sorry, I saw it looking at it, that's how I feel. So, what I really want to do with this is just let me know how I'm doing, you know?
Once the electric thing is on, and you submit it, you can have one or two people, like the chair of the joint, and the frontier chair, collect them.
They can be the...
They're the old ones.
Well, they, what we're sending out becomes the owner.
Exactly, so, they just have to send out an email.
So, it's under...
This is how I was, this Google Form was how I was evaluated at the Greenfield Commonwealth Virtual School. So, I got a copy from them, I made a copy of it, and so, I have ownership, so whoever needs it, I will pass it along. You can make a copy, and then you can...
That's great.
Rock on.
Right, thank you.
I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and how I set it up, how I set it up...
Wouldn't that be easier?
Yeah. Yeah, how I set it up is, the business about the goals for this year would not even show up in the form, because you can set it to what section you want it to go to.
Gotcha.
It's all in sections, so the goals wouldn't even appear this year, it would just need to be edited the following year.
To put them in.
To put the goals in.
And when we fill this out, say, number eleven, is there a spot to write anything for number eleven? You could, like, after you pick...
Yeah, yeah.
The comments right under...
There's free standards, there's a comment section.
Only standard. Gotcha, like, six questions.
Okay.
So, then you can just put the notes, put the...
As it relates to each one.
Item number you're commenting on, and go from there.
And then in your public meeting, you would then determine what the overall rating is.
Yeah, I think it just needs to be simple and to the point, you know, we want participation. People get so busy, it's a very important part, and they should be spending time doing this, but...
So, again, I guess my proposal is to do something very similar to this for June, just so people can give some feedback this year. And then maybe, I mean, we can even add something miscellaneous feedback, kind of do, it doesn't fit directly here, if anybody wants to add comments. I mean, because, I say things like that, because I always think the public is positive, but I guess...
Yeah.
I mean, we, a whole other problem is, if one committee posts me very poorly, and the rest of the committees vote me very positively, there's no, there's no legal framework for what they're doing in that situation.
Right.
Other than I better improve, and I want to...
Just, yeah, you get some knowledge about where you're working.
Right, that's what I need, is feedback, because if there's an area that people feel that they need to be working harder in, or doing more with, I need that feedback, and the public needs to see that.
So, should we have, are you going to, is there a way to change the form so that you have a little bubble that is sort of not applicable, or, you know?
Yeah, that can be added in.
Because otherwise, you, or just that the form can accept no bubble.
Right, my administrative assistant actually was the keeper of the form.
Okay.
And so, she was able to keep track of who in the board was completing it, and sending out the, you know, hands-off. And so, she just, and then when the time came, she just pulled the, pulled the report out and handed it off.
So, I'll add an NA.
Well, otherwise, a default position for many people maybe needs improvement, because they haven't heard about this area, or done this. You know what I mean, if you're trying, if you don't know what to answer, you have to pick one.
Right.
And it's a big difference.
In sufficient.
It's a big difference.
We haven't heard about it, and see it's going just fine. All right, so I'll add an NA, so that at least you can have honest feedback on the areas that people don't...
People may not want to, yeah.
And I'd rather have that than everybody thinks I'm doing great in the area, but they really don't have no idea what that area is.
Right, or they're just randomly putting things on there.
But I like some of the, I mean, I liked the reminder things.
Reminder ideas?
You know, the games reminder, so I don't need to know...
About what they had done that year?
How many years you've gone to a year. I got that covered, I know how many, but some of the other things.
If you just go back to your year. Vote in highlights.
I think, geez, what did we do this, for something?
Well, I do, there's a part of it is I want to, I want to, I want to, I want people to be reminded, because I agree, I want to do something like that in the summary of different ones, because I want people...
If I'm going to write something, I want to...
Well, if I'm going to be a guide, I better make sure that people remember.
What you've done.
You know?
Yes. It's important.
Okay, so I can do that, too. So, there's no voter in here, so I'll just move forward, and have a discussion again at Frontier in about an hour, and then...
Okay.
All right. The next thing.
Central Office staff?
The central office staff changeovers, as you know, have been announced that Louise Law has retired, and I filled that position with Tim McCarthy, who was the early childhood director, and I think she's going to be a great fit in that position. She knows the district and understands the position, and is going to work great with Sarah Mitchell in that position, so... And just let you know, on top of that, so I'm now, currently, we're in the process of hiring a new childhood, early childhood director, director of early childhood. And we're also in the process of, we just opened up for Bob Lasko's position. So, I just, that was just kind of a reminder, people have been following the emails on that.
And as part of that, did you look at all those positions to see if anything could be combined in any way?
I was going to ask that, too.
That's originally how that got out on the list, is that another school member asked about whether or not the position was necessary, and need to buy it, that kind of stuff. Yes, we looked at that as administrative team, the amount, the amount that the early childhood director does, and I could even ask Karen, we can jump in. They do a lot, especially, especially with the uptick that we're seeing with special needs and specialized services for early identification. It's, it is a difficult, and that's one of the things we're talking about as an administrative team, is that when a student is diagnosed with a learning disability at such a young age, it's also very difficult for families, and needing extra, extra help through the process of just kind of working through, what does this mean? What does an IP mean, what does, you know, what does a separate programming mean, or any kind of things that fall under that scale. An extra administrator has been very, it's been a necessity in that, and I think it's even more so. But then also coordinating all the different programs and such as well. So, yeah, so that's, I think it is, I don't think there's an area to reduce. You know, there's obviously going to be a shift in, I don't want to say obviously a shift, but, you know, with people moving in and out, there's going to be some payroll. You know, someone being here thirty years versus someone not, you're going to see some shifts in payrolls and that kind of stuff, but there'll be some savings there.
Okay. Something that just you included on your report.
Sorry, going to reports?
Can we go to, well, sorry.
I'll go read the reports.
I was just checking off the thing on your reports with the staffing changes, but, no, I'll get to it later, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, are you done with that, then?
I'm done.
So, anybody, got any questions about central office staff, anything there was new? Okay, sorry, so you have your reports.
Great, principals before me. And for those of you guys who didn't hear, that Tina was not well today, so, she should never come to work.
All right, so Polly Bath, so Jennifer was fortunate enough to have the faculty staff have an opportunity to join some small groups to discuss Polly Bath, who's an expert in behavioral behavior. So, she lists nice small groups, talking about recess and lunch safety, and disruptive behaviors related to emotional dysregulation, and, you know, how to address in the language that we should use at the school, and some judisco consistent values and behaviors when working with these students. We also had two full faculty PVs last Friday and the Friday before that, with a whole school get-together, and had a chance to have, you know, some nice discussions about trauma-based dimensions, and how to work with this invasive population of students who need these types of services. So, the hiring process, as you know, I'm moving back.
This is great that you could report this.
As I discovered this position, Frontier, and that position was more to my professional satisfaction liking, so I am leaving the position. Currently, Louise Law and Tina are co-chairing committee to meet starting next Friday to review applications, and then start the process of looking for more replacements. Okay, what did I say? And then, other hirings are building, so, we have had a kindergarten teacher that this committee has selected. They've also selected a sixth-grade teacher in search. They've also selected instructional assistants for next year. We are still in search of a special ed teacher for the new program that we're hoping to start in the fall.
It's, and it's been posted?
It has been posted, yes, that has started, and the last one was a special ed secretary. We're also in the process of that, for hiring for that also, so lots of hiring going on to be completed, hopefully, you know, beginning of June. So, once again, the PTA did a beautiful math-science day. It's been a longstanding program that they do in the school, everyone truly enjoys it. Missy Novak and the Gen Chambers really organized it nicely this year. We have a lot of local, people come to the building, we had the reptile show, we had the fire trucks and the ambulances. We also had abstract, you know, TV news come in, do the whole nice weather activity with the kids. Um, so this is an activity that I'm sure will continue years down, but it's a great opportunity for the kids to have a whole day reading the science, which is great. Moving on to facilities, so, let's see here, the door hardware, so, in all, we have, let's see, trying to get for lobby doors, so the exterior door is supposed to plan to have the card access going in, so, we had center millenniums, we have new hardware, we have electric strikes that were added to ensure that these doors are all secured for when we move on to the card access. I know that the convergence vendor that Scott Paul, Tina chose, is our little PDO issued, and they're supposed to be starting towards the end of June, I believe, and all that.
Great.
I know it's got today, and that's the, so really, they're enrolling this will be for the next school year, so, basically, so, we'll have the, the summer to give out the kinks of the program, it took six months longer than we thought it was gonna take.
Yeah, it's a good job.
It's both Frontier and, but we're doing them together.
Oh, wow.
Great, Lord's praise.
Yep. So is the building now equipped with electronic door locks?
All the doors are set up to do it.
Uh, set up to do it.
Correct.
This, I mean, I understand the software has to go in place to support the card access, I just wanted to know.
The hardware is not in place, but the doors couldn't, couldn't take the hardware.
Without the proper strikes.
Without the strikes and without the, some of them weren't closing properly or latching properly, so all that had to be done first.
Door lock.
That's great.
So the moving of the boilers, um, so we did have two high efficiency boiler, boilers installed.
Yes.
It's replacing the very old boilers that we used to have, so it sounds like we put two new boilers in, and they're keeping one of the old ones in place, just as a backup if that's needed.
Yep.
We also had our C new lights installed, high efficiency, I don't know if you guys see them coming in, you know, that's the new LED lighting system that the department brought back. So the boilers are all set to go up and running in the light system. Moving on to classrooms, lots of classroom activities are happening, uh, the pre-K is broader kindergarten again, so we have local authors coming in to VES with a local illustrator, parent illustrator, so doing a whole project with what, you know, what the grandpa, what the grandparent, and really developing some nice family trees and family stories related to that.
That's great.
Third K, third grade went to the Hitchcock Center, oh, sorry, going to Hitchcock Center on May 24th, studying the palm and the ecosystem. Uh, fourth grade is doing an energy unit, testing potential and kinetic energy, fifth grade went to Bondi Island, looking at the whole system.
I always laugh when, why do we always laugh when they say?
So who would have thought that would be a field trip destination?
Come down and sit down there, good one, if they want.
Soon enough. He's a money maker in there.
Let's start charging.
So the lead program has a Special Olympics, a track and field tournament taking place next week, it was sadly rained out for last Friday, and then we have the young athletes, you know, showcase some of the workers in the adaptive PE. The librarian is trying to do the leading project, where she's trying to read out titles that are over 25 years old, I know it's the goal to eventually, um, have all the publications being audited. So, she's following the must be, this leading, ugly, superseded, preview, all those things are essential for picking and choosing what books will be read out. Mr. Wall's class has made a fantastic painting of folk and art flowers during art class, um, it's supposed to be displayed at the Tilton Library, and then Mr. Edgely with the Spanish, he's doing lots of work at the Tilton in the first grade. And it's a nice fan of songs, and really intervention with Spanish is so important.
I, um, I just think it's wonderful that, um, that the book from Jane Trichet was able to be shared, and, um, two really special. Remember, it's really nice to see that, that you're using that book that, you know, Lou Vincent did with her, so, it's great, nice to see that.
All right, thank you much. And you'll be, you'll be here next meeting too?
Yes.
Um, so Darius, your report.
Yeah, it's pretty much the same, but let me give you the one thing that we didn't talk about, um, is that, it just, I just got a, on May, early May, I got a, I think from the state, it talked about, um, school choice.
I don't think there was a handout.
No, they sent it to me.
Oh, okay, so see handout, though, you said to us see handout.
Oh.
So we didn't get the handout about what the changes.
Okay.
I don't think.
Nope, you didn't. All right, so you don't have a handout, so basically, I'll summarize it, and then I'll send it, I'll, I'll shoot you the email.
Did you have a report, a email?
It's part of the packet.
It's a, look at one pager like this.
So, um, so I'll have to send you the, the thing I got from the state, but basically, Dasi is saying, the new interpretation of school choice is that, if you're a part of the regional school district, school choice from the sending elementary schools does not give you an automatic placement in the regional school. And so, the, the good news is that that's grandfathered in, meaning, so anybody who's currently enrolled in the elementary schools can follow that system, but the new kindergarten class coming in, we're gonna have to put that on the enrollment form that says, this does not guarantee you a spot at Frontier.
So, right.
Reapply?
You have to reapply, so basically, you, you can't.
Because we're two distinct districts.
Because legally, we're two distinct districts, and therefore, you know, who are we to, whatever, so, I, you know, there's different, there's different opinions is why that's happened. Um, one could be that the state wants everybody to regionalize, and so therefore, um, they're trying to use this as a motivator, two, basic interpretation of law, three, they're really annoyed with the, all the school choice problems that are out there, and they're just gonna try to make it ugly. I'm going with number three, but I'm sure that's not the right answer.
I mean, the real impact, though, is, I mean, is there gonna be a real impact?
I don't, looking at this, looking at the choice, looking at the numbers of students coming up over the next five years, it's kind of hard to predict, I mean, it can go all the way down to, you know, first grade. Our numbers are lower, is about 15 people, students lower than we were the last 10 years. So, you know, keeping the numbers where we are at the middle school, um, about, and we try to keep the incoming class at 120, you know, you're talking about class sizes that are coming through at just over 100, so, you know.
So there's plenty of them.
So there's room, and so I, there's no real, so, what we're gonna try to make sure we get out there that, um, that we will do everything, we're doing, we're gonna try everything possible to get students who are school choiced into our, in our senior districts to have that many slots open as they move up.
But that doesn't guarantee, I mean, you have to lottery it, don't you?
Doesn't guarantee you the lottery, but you're talking about the loans we have to lottery, starting with the current kindergarten class of next year, so.
Who knows?
Yeah, and you basically have, well, yeah, six years to.
Six years.
Um, to figure it out, and who knows what's gonna change the legislation by in six years, um, so I'm not overly.
Right now, at Frontier, I'm not, we're not really aware of it here, are, how many, uh, slots that are, that are open to be here for people to apply for seven through 12?
It's been tight the last couple of years.
It has.
Because we've pushed, we've been, we've had to cap it, um, the last couple of years, in, so, the current eighth grade was capped, the current seventh grade wasn't, the eighth grade prior to that was capped, um, I think maybe prior to that, and when they were a seventh grade, they were capped as well, so.
And that's kind of a good thing, right, I mean, we don't want, obviously, the issue we got here where we had a ton, not a ton.
Right, so we don't, we base our number at 120, we don't wanna be over 120, because that makes us have sections over 24, and we don't wanna have sections over 24.
We don't want whole classes of, you know, one or eight of kids.
Right.
And then fill in where you can.
Right, and that's, that's the idea, so, um, you know, however, it's a good point, where this actually, may actually protect us in the long run, although I don't see it in the numbers right now going through the next six years, but, if you had 130 kids and you had 40 school choice for some reason, you know, that'd be more than, Frontier would have to hire an additional teacher in that seventh grade in order to handle the school choice number.
Right.
Which has never happened.
Good.
Because it's just the way, it's just the way that, I mean, it's probably a mathematical equation that works, if you have, you know, four sending schools that can only have so many school choice slots, you never gonna get above that number.
Good, yep.
You know what I mean, especially with the biggest sender, yeah, especially with the biggest sender being Deerfield, everybody's monitoring it, you know what I mean, so you can't have these huge, these huge bumps.
Right.
So.
Good, okay.
And then.
Wonder how that works, just for the curiosity, with students that we have in this district, in the union, that are going between union schools, but they still would be eligible to go to regional without being school choice.
That's correct, they would be, they would immediately default.
They go off of school choice books now.
Right, they do, exactly, they do come off of school choice books, right, they're not considered school choice, so, that inner union thing. I just kind of gave you a summary, and I sent you an email today regarding what's going on in the Senate, but basically, they called it Bloody Monday, or Murder Monday, or whatever, something like that, in the sense of, all the House bills failed for education, basically, and I can't just give you a listing there. And the only two things that really went forward was increasing chapter 70 to $30, which was 20, and keeping transportation, or increased regional transportation to 80% reimbursement, which will certainly help Frontier, but it doesn't really affect on you, um, here. But right now, there's a whole bunch of different proposals, and I, again, I sent you an email today, what's being, going on in the Senate next week, it's really, if you hit the first link, it's kind of interesting, you go down to education, you can kind of open up. I found it was, I thought it was interesting, the, the different kind of bills that are out there, and then there's some major ones, and then there's ones that deal with a playground in Westfield, and like, you know, it's kind of, it's just very interesting, I, I thought, I never really.
The one that struck me was the request for 100,000 to study a Berkshire County School District.
The Berkshires are hurting, they're hurting.
Well, but you also could see that down the road, Franklin County.
Yeah.
Just because of some of the difficulties that some of those fricking schools are having.
They're trying to merge up there too.
So, wow. Okay. Any more, any questions?
Anything else is written there?
Darius, anybody? No? Okay. All right, so I'm gonna, if nobody has anything else in our regular meeting, I guess I'm gonna make the motion to go to executive session. And I guess I'll read it off and I'll do it, yeah, it looks like we're doing it for two things, so, pursuant to Mass General law chapter 38, section 21, two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation of negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with negotiations, excuse me, with non-union personnel. And we're also, in the same motion, to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General law chapter 31A, section 21, three, to discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public body and the chair, so declares.
Second.
Which we are clear. Second, okay?
And no decisions will be made.
There's no vote coming out.
Uh, no. Okay, no decisions when we come back out for adjournment, yep, there'll be no votes taken, all right?
Sounds good.
So.
I, Trevor McDaniel?
I, Trevor McDaniel?
It's gotta be a yes or no, Trevor, come on. A yes, Trevor? You have to say yes, Trevor. Yes. I don't care.
Yes, David Sharp?
Yes, David.
Yes, Karen.
Yes?
Yes, Karen.
Okay, yes, Karen.
Would you invite myself?
Yes, and we are inviting, uh, everybody who is here, uh, from the administration to stay with us.